...and listening and gathering stage, we're trying to get as much information as possible on understanding of Lincoln City Parks Recreation System today. There's been several public engagement events. We had over fifty-one folks attend the public open house. Deborah has attended and engaged Roseanne's improvement association meeting. She also attended workshop at the state of James. I mean, they're named Santiago, I call them Santiago's school. Yeah, they were here in this room and there was a whole workshop that was typically about the park environment and nature that people are involved in. It was a lot of fun and we got a lot of good ideas. We did a lot of background review. Looking at, there's been a lot of work to date in the entire city as far as following different types of work the city does from waste water wars, from water, we have infrastructure, transportation, and what the last master plan said. Does anyone remember the last master plan? Yes, from two thousand one? I think, it's Scotty, Scotty's actually, we're not moving through here today. Okay, so Scotty was part of that effort, so he's sort of the institutional knowledge of that part of bringing that information together. And then we went into basically taking all that information together and putting together an inventory and looking at the opportunities and challenges that it presented. This document is a draft. It looks very clean and neat and tidy, but it's a draft. It's intended to be worked on and scribbled on and manipulated and changed. So just because it looks pretty, don't let that stop you. We need your help. We need your feedback and information to help us make it what things to do for Lincoln City. So part of the reason it looks this clean and pretty and sturdy final is because we have a very tight deadline for overall for this project and a very limited scope. So we're trying to, we were done with tasks, we're trying to do the first five chapters of the document. We're starting with the end in line, we're starting with the document by the way, it's not fine. Got it? So, okay. We can do next. So we are right here, June already, we're coming to this task right here, which is a check-in review to understand, you know, how do we do and get sort of, also on how we do forward, what would be thinking about what we've done so far and how do we move forward this information, what does it mean to come up with recommendations for, how are you going to do that? We're going to have a community open house and another pack meeting in August. And I believe Deborah was thinking that we were extending out a due role for the old years or some other wizard or something like that, August fifteenth to nineteenth. So we'll be watching for that and open house at the same time. Yeah, so we're going to basically have the open house information and recommendations and the pack meeting at the same time. We're sort of tapping two of those efforts to kind of change sleep in here for still a little bit, I don't know. What would happen is that the information and the feedback from each of you during the pack meeting and the information from the public, the open house, and then we combine in the next draft. So that's probably for. All of this is working very diligently, trying to get an adoption by the end of November, with the council review session towards the end of October. So this is all the other time to be ordered in state parks grant, so we thank Jay, and state parks for providing Lincoln City with this grant, but they also want it completed by a certain time, so we thank Jay for that too. Sorry, I have to make you know.
That's all right.
You gotta keep it light. So anyone have any questions about the schedule? For concerns? Go ahead. So part, I only have like fifteen slides, so it's not, it's not legal for information. And mostly I'm just going to type listening, honestly, for the session. So I'm just going to go through a couple things if you have any questions to take, please out. I'm just going to highlight a couple of the changes that we noted in the document from the first time when we met last time. Each of you came back with three very powerful words to describe your desires, hopes, and dreams of the system. We took those words and basically used all of your words, the ones that were having the most dots on stage, to create vision statement. We brought that back to the open house and had people react, and had people react to that vision statement. And I, there are other vision statements that are not up here that had no changes, but these, I'm just going to go through a few that actually there were changes and suggestions. So this was a whole new, I just want this one out. Continues to provide access to Lincoln City's expansive beach and waterways. That was a new statement that was not represented, not represented in any way in the original vision. And so that was an important one to add because Lincoln City has each of, or some of unbelievable methods, so I thought that would be a great entry. This one, you know, in addition to celebrating nature, the change of celebration of celebrate and preserve nature, which is a different, a little bit different connotation. So I just wanted to introduce, you know, we're making language changes that people are very, don't agree with what we're doing now, so we can make further changes. In addition to this presentation, the intent is that you have written comments, if you have more comments than you have, and what's presented tonight, the place provided is Deborah, on James first, and we'll be taking that comment and moving forward to the draft recommendation. So if you have time, if you have more time to read through the document, this is really just sort of a overall presentation, just to get your mindset and spirit. I'll be doing the next. There were one change here. So there are no changes to creating a safe and diverse range in indoor activities, indoor and outdoor activities. This one responds to current and future needs and includes facilities that are modern and viable, and are designed not very sustainably, and include added carbon footprint for other polluters. So it's a little subtle word change, response to current and future needs, and includes existing new and advanced facilities. So we wanted to recognize that we need to maintain a way out, but we need to also consider new facilities for the future. So those are just some very subtle changes I wanted to make sure that everyone was okay with. No comments?
We've got no comments.
Yeah?
Back on the previous slide.
Sure.
The second board, which is implied, compared to the season made or about where his abilities and what he could have means, financials, and that's like, you know, various, maybe a bit.
And that was one of the, and we could further along, that was one of the, I had a five pictures, what's maybe a disability.
So if you want to build on that, the city has become a lot of conflict from the last renovation, finding, like, just said, and it was quite as simple to play there, just a conventional playground, providing for the main kids, really, those playgrounds aren't the trend is looking at making sure that the playground is accessible to the kids of all ages, and providing them, not just something, but, you know, not just some component of that playground, but something that's really important and, you know, exciting about that playground, making sure that's inclusive as well, not just something off on the side. So, it's a good comment.
Could you give us an example of what we're speaking of?
Yes. Um, talking of playgrounds, they have platform systems and they have swings, they have climbers, and what we're noticing now is, like others, Jersey, other parks, we're asking to provide some sort of playground feature where a kid can normal physical, noise conducive, but also a kid, perhaps a wheelchair, and also useful. And I'm talking, not just physical, I'm talking about inclusivity. A lot of our disabilities and our children are not being physical, knowing our, kind of, social and mental issues. And so providing inclusive play for those kids to become a trend, a lot of the trends are on that. And so, making sure that the playground is designed so that parents can watch autistic children safely use that facility and that requires a different, it's not a focus than a traditional playground. So, you know, making sure there's some barriers to keep the kids from clothes, that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Before we, just their programs type, you know, vision statements are pretty varied. I am reading the question, and what my stride to create, why this is going to be saying we will create.
Create.
The policy to say.
Why do I have to, the purpose of stride are always constrained? And so when you talk about we will create, that creates an expectation, may, may not be realistic based on the non-essential changes in city.
Well, those are always going to be there. They're not going to disappear.
It is a vision statement for kids to draw and something that we may never entirely obtain.
So you do have a degree in that, but you're a failure to do it all. Definitely, you're an operator, that's, that's not, strive for that, or if you're talking about vision, if vision creates something, you're not vision.
Striving?
Yeah. If you don't, vision, thank you.
Why don't you, why don't you give that some thought? You know, I think.
If you don't, I'm not. If you haven't created that part of the system, then I don't.
Or you still have the vision to achieve. I think it's, you know, the community has a vision or the city visions, the community that is well connected and accessible, that's like a qualifier, the same visions that community, it's not saying the city will create a community or strive to create, it's just the same visions that community. The way to have community.
Another way to look at this, timelines, does this note that it's a certain timeline for that statement, or if we just take rules stride off there? We will get there eventually. It may not be five years, ten years, but we will get there, and that's a stronger statement that is striving for. Like, literally, I don't care. I mean, I don't think being up here doesn't feel like you're set yourself up or better if you don't get there, because of playing timeline, it's definitely one with this statement.
And that should probably be a qualifier to the document itself, saying this is a system plan that is for creative vision for the future and a planning document for the city parks recreation trail system for the next twenty years, fifteen years. And will be revisited at the fifteen year mark to check in and also will be updated in twenty years. So that's the way this could also, that's really, very much in the document store. Any, any further thoughts, comments? And again, your comment, also, comment and email, always, coming in.
If you're on, possible.
So last bullet, there are certain changes, but I'd like to revisit it just a little bit. Ambitious versus realistic, and I think that's getting to Joseph and Douglas, exchange or discussion with Minnie, I would hope to re-go create a board, a strategy, and so in the ambition versus the reality. Getting the ability to be part of the community's vision, so there's no changes for that, but this is definitely something you're going to feel in the document, a balance, a timely balance for the ambitious vision, which is the reality of what we can achieve. And so that's something that's a careful balance, and I like this one to point out now, because at the end of this theme, we're going to talk about that big vision, and what are those big moves, those big things that Lincoln City possibly could consider, and something that Lila provided feedback in her comments, meaning what is, what is this big vision, what is this big idea? So, just, human growth for the, okay, here we go. So, we had a fantastic open house. It was a great event. A lot of people, a lot of people in this room attended. We had about fifty-one folks that came, and we got a lot of really great feedback, a lot of critical feedback about the city, its facilities, the inventory, the activities that were desired, what people were able to do now, what people want to do in the future, but we feel good about it. So the next couple slides essentially are many bullets and many comments from the action draft, the full narrative, first, before this here, which is outlined somewhere in the document. At the end of this, we also have some feedback comments already that some folks at the table are invited in addition to the primary management team, and so we'll go with that as well. So, and then we're going to talk about what we missed. What we heard so far, top activities, walking, relaxing, bird watching, parakeets, paddling, ice skating, baseball, resourcing, the open house, the pool work session, and our last pack meeting. The Roseanne Association meeting, improvement association meeting, comments that are here that Deborah attended are not included, so we'll be updating that in a few days. The current parks that are our favorite parks that are being allowed to use, and not mainly either being because people know them, and or they're easy to get to, these are the parks that Rose is the top as far as people choose. Curtis Park, maybe center, we were say park, the wayside, the state park wayside, and the mall, the desert park, that also came from the constant activity of you guys. Regatta Park, was definitely the top part from the school. So you can see, you know, based on who's, who your audience is, what your answer might be. And so, of course, the system plan is intended to be very relevant of all of others and all of the community. One thing that we're going to revisit is the providing specificity and trying to technically quantify the numbers and the responses. We, in the summary that's provided, there is a lot of language that says several for many people, or several for the top responses, et cetera, very generalized, a very generalized overview of responses. We're going to follow up and maybe more specificity, so that you know it's four out of four people, or four out of forty people have this conference, but that's something that's going to have to come, be updated and then Deborah will follow up. We do have that information from the pack meeting, from the open house, the head of the Roseanne's, which is a game, and as long as the state, James, I don't know somebody else. Santiago, Santiago, I just keep learning, stay in the same territory.
I think, I'd like to interject here, and Richard's manager at the moment, but we'll be doing a comprehensive plan, and maybe as part of that, we will be doing a scientific survey where we can actually say that the numbers that we have responding represent the community as large. We do that by statistical analysis to make sure that, you know, the demographics are the same, so. With a walk in the like this, like we're having, even though, you know, a lot of people said they like kayaking, they are a part of, you know, baseball, it may be because the baseball team practice just got done, and, you know. So it's really interesting, and we got a lot of great ideas, but actually trying to say that they represent communities as large is a stretch until we can actually do a scientific survey. And it's something we may want to pursue.
Yes, and again, you know, based on the scope of this project, we don't have a statistical analysis survey effort as part, as part of this project. And so that's why, honestly, you know, your involvement and your engagement and participating in the community and in this process is really important because you are helping to represent a greater fraction of people than just yourself. You're representing the system, the, you're representing Roseanne. You know, there's a greater group of people that we hope that you're going back to, Jay's really going back and telling MJ what's going on in Lincoln City. So, the greater, quickly, we are really hoping that you'll be able to share that information with other residents, visitors, family members that visit where they think and they think they represent. So, thank you for doing that.
Would you, if you're a resident, if you're a visitor to the park, would you visit to first? I mean, we have eight thousand, from the residents, fifteen thousand during summer, and we're trying to draw families, probably a lot more children, not people who do the person that are, which are the resident, the camera. Just to me, you might skip ahead, but the thing I've got to make is we want to make three playgrounds. Would you have anybody from the public schools?
We had, we had, what's her name, Rob, who was a, a school candidate administrator at TAN, who was participated in a state career, and, there we have a previous, to remember, the, 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 principal.
Principal, yes.
Paul Molly.
So we did, we didn't have some, we didn't have.
We are reaching out to this. It's, it's a little harder to get some of that now, um, you know, connections with some baby at the school.
Sure.
So that would be nice to get them involved too, and we could do workshops, like at the school, there.
Because we, we already have this trail to go relatively close to some of the schools, but they don't, it's sort of quite get there. And I think that it would be wonderful to support the, you know, the walking activity of the students. I think if a lot of students have driven to school, and if we have, you'd be a little bit better setup, because most school students that choose to walk, you'd be, you know.
How do you, how do we manage the, the trails?
Actually, one, our last project management team member is addressed at, who is the director of the sisters convention bureau here. And he has done a lot of surveying to try to determine what people want, and why they can stay with more of this event.
Yeah, at least, he's helped several focus groups and, and trying to get a sense of who is here, why, why they're here, what they're taking advantage of, and I don't think I've prepared a draft for this result on, but it would be good for you guys to hear.
Have you offered, added about this specific mass?
Oh, yes.
So is that something that the current focus group that he's doing, that survey that he's currently doing?
No, this was all done last year, so.
This would probably be a good thing to have in my, you know, existing conditions or. Again, this is just commenting on overall, so we've been modifying based on the numbers that we have to date, and we can assess it, but overall, our data parks, community centers, the trails, including the Napier, double site, and reach access facilities, are sort of the definitions of the park system so far, what people live in value, and are really important to them and they use frequently. So moving forward, we want to think about, so what is it that makes them valuable? There are certain amenities or facilities are there, where improvements are needed, and how do we expand what people use, other facilities, and, yes, great fun, and so. Desired improvements, so a lot of, a lot of room for improvement. People saw things that they would like to improve, and so this was, you know, can be improved within the names of the trails in the open space areas. And, and there has been a lot of effort. City has hired an open space volunteer coordinator and team, we have volunteer groups, and there's been a lot of effort so far, and with the, the bidding process, and the bidding process and that area, so there's been a lot of effort to get the trails to where we want to date, but, you know, there's more effort to build future trails and keeping them maintained as well, and creating the stations to the schools, really open spaces. Regatta Park, we're rocking on, and Regatta Park right now, as we speak. There's construction for the amphitheater, there's retaining walls being reconstructed, there's additional amenities to happen currently at Regatta Park. Regatta Park is, is a crown jewel in the system, it's loved by all. I don't know how many visitors know about, there are visitors out of that thirty thousand, you know, how many people know about, kind of, other playgrounds, take the kids, that walk, walk and dock, fishing. So that's part of thinking about something outside the box, how do we connect with, to let people know about Regatta Park, and then also people within, maybe people within Lincoln City that don't know about Regatta Park. Maybe it's like this thing called art season, beginning of inventory that it needs, that was an identified need. You have an incredible art collection, you have murals, you have sculptures, you have an incredible inventory of art, and that's been sort of part of Lincoln City's draw for visitors, but also for residents. Even the little park, kind of, you know, that small little bathroom, has a beautiful tile sculptural mural on the face of the inside. So it took a, basically, a small restaurant building and elevated it to a different level. You know, it's a beautiful mural, one we're not expecting to have that level of art piece in a potluck, and it's potentially a potluck. So, a lot, it's a lot to be proud of, but again, it's also a lot to maintain. So there needs to be a process. There is a part, we have, we met them, they had interviews, they haven't met in a long time, so there's been some, sort of faltering as far as, you know, keeping those meetings going and having a direction, but there needs to be an inventory of those pieces and basically what things need to be done.
How about the, the inventory of art, is it fairly evenly distributed, or is it concentrated in core areas, is it concentrated in each of the districts? Do they all have the, do you have a sense of that?
There is a map to date that I have, that, well, or standing, she's shaking her head, developed a date to show, but it feels from my experience of looking at the whole different sites, it feels very well distributed, and part of that's because of the cultural arts center, and, you know, it's got energy, and cash flow, and the folks that are engaged in the arts center, and, you know, so, there it goes. Is there a feel from the group?
I'd say it's pretty close first, I think it's a path, you have the very discur, little part there with the, I still hear the, the meeting center's got a lot of recent.
Regatta Park has a drawing, TAN has the salmon, steel sculpture, um, they're.
Jolo, Jolo Skye.
Yeah, Jolo Skye, and we've got several file murals, they're, that connect, through the, connect sculptures, but it feels there.
For the, for the, for the, for the art.
So that's the salmon, and that's part. So that's the sound of, and that's part of, you know, overall, we find in signage plans within our investigation, we find. And I guess it's the better signs for trails in the villages, the better way of finding signage in city in general. There's great signs that orient you to your place in the city as far as the neighborhood community, you know, your TAN, your local community, which are late. That helps, that gets people oriented, but once you're at Dorchester Park, you don't know where to go from. If you're not, even if you are, if you live in TAN and you just, someone told you about Dorchester, you went to Dorchester, you may not know that the whole park is close by and has a playground. So there's that ability to connect the parks that provide that connectivity and gives people a understanding of where they are and where they want to take their, so that's something that we need to define. Need for improvement, overall, play structures, drinking mountains, coffee kiosks, warm showers, the warm showers at Hedge Canyon Park, that's definitely an amenity that is a huge draw for those who are in the community. And then community center, I mean, we spent time with stakeholder interviews, GAD was very helpful in providing a pulse on the community center as a director. She understands what's happening there on a daily basis and was able to give a lot of insight about what committed to make the community center better and serve the citizens in their life.
I was curious where the internet facilities came from? That type of scarcity.
That was coming from the public group, not us.
There are, yeah, there are. So they're right there. I can also ask for...
There's another one that... So gaps, dog park, purpose park, organization facility in the south of Lincoln City, gathering places in the city for young people, multi-modal access, the city down and forth, the around, training places, carport, all the, purpose courts, and there are a bunch of listed four hundred and fifty visitors, so like eight or more of our preparation facilities are also in gaps. What is going to keep going?
On the previous slide, I commented on the open space trails, you know, the, I don't know what to think of that, because if improvements are to be added, making on curbing, that'll be out of them, that's why we feel like we're really out of town. It's very, you know, trying to, trying not to aid the trails there. Certainly striking the balance of getting people up there and not having trails spread or else you're not.
Keeping that true.
All right, I was trying to give the wood amenities, just to put a little straight on, I'm sure that, I can see better signs here. That segment of this is like, you know, the rivers and calm down, the trails is in there.
Yeah, trailhead, signage, similar to what's happened in the park, virtual parking, dog tags, that's what we're covering. If I can mention a couple of them.
Roland, I feel as a gap also here for, well, I heard, I'm not sure where, the Latino community wanting space for extended families. What was that third goal of the extended gathering losses? Yes, yes, for...
Extended families.
Grandmothers, aunts, children.
Or maybe other children, yeah, I think it could be a older.
Yes, yes. Older people could be comfortable.
I think, I might be, there's more just indoor facilities. They're bringing, today, pretty hard.
At least come, at least come now.
No, I think indoor, indoor is a different thing. You know, the bigger, so.
Oh, this does seem complex.
Yeah, I think it's different, different types of parts.
So that gets to the purpose park organization facility in the south of Lincoln City, people have, well, not having covered indoor spaces, initiatives to your own creation space.
Something to look at, maybe if you cover the walls.
The football announce has covered outdoor courts for basketball, fantasy football, so that's the reason you are, are you trying to, answering, the ball coming. Well, I was wondering how...
What was the, what was the sign? Yeah, it was, it was, multi-use. So those are sort of, those are, sorry, there's multiple, a lot of these slides, so we're gonna do the same thing over and over again, it's actually a little different. So don't want to lose anybody, but the last one, we recognize, what are those physical facilities, what are those things that we need to have? Whereas this one, master plan priorities, so providing opportunities to the youth equals, you know, decent, equals covered spaces with walls for teams to go, crowd holds, you know, something to do. So these were the overall, overarching master plan priorities that are stemming from the overall vision, but also coming from results of all these engagement, practice classes, stakeholder interviews, the open house.
San Diabos.
San Diabos, so creating connection between individual parks and neighborhoods, so how to create that interconnected system, so how to create that ability to provide packages, for example, from Deep River to St. Creek, from, from the side side. No, we have an open space for wildlife unit, walking, providing opportunities for safe dog walking and off-the-terrain, supporting walking, running, and bicycle on the road pathway, providing access to the beach, providing opportunities for youth. The train, the show had an opportunity to plant parks and playgrounds, providing families or group gatherings, so they're sure, that's a bigger overarching idea, and maintaining and strengthening partnerships. So these are the overarching ideas that are going to be carried forward, and then we will be suggesting individual facilities and activities, those gaps, as part of this graph that we're making in the next round.
Are all of these priorities of equal importance or are they listed in order when you're looking, creating the priorities of the planning commission, city council is looking at this, do they all have equal weight or how do you know which is the most important?
So that's, that's a good question, because again, these are coming, came from the twenty-five folks represented at TAN here, coming from the fifty-one folks that attended the open house, it's coming from twenty, coming in thirty people, they do it in interviews, so there'd be like twenty-two people that are in.
So, so is it the intent then of document that as these are presented, that the city council will then come in and prioritize these and say, of these that were mentioned, these are the ones that are the most important, these are the ones that are the most...
So, so that's, that's, that's coming, just a few seconds. Because I need, honestly, I need your help, because we don't have, you know, we don't have a survey that's going on in the water bill to get everyone to tell us what the priority is. We need your, we need your help, we need the votes, to help us prioritize and help you prioritize what those things are. So the city council can make decisions about what capital resources are in the town first.
I anticipate that, we have other plans, we have a project list, and this group will help form that project list and set priorities somehow, recommend priorities, and then the council goes over and sees if they agree or want to change it.
So currently, they're not listed in the work, in the merit, they don't, it's more priority, and it's bullets. So these are the, I think, this is, again, we've got the giant bucket, this is the giant bucket of ideas, but we come back to the recommendations, we'll be testing that with the second public process and saying, okay, does this meet this priority? And then we may have an exercise saying, okay, of these priorities, what are your top three? So that the projects that, you know, a project that has all three components or all three of the priorities associated with one of these projects, it bubbles to the top and helps the project.
So like, both of these are creating, I mean, Daniel, we have a great connection between them, but there needs to be a special goal for, for a new project, adding parks, it seems to be, you know, the half mile circle and the two mile circle, it's obviously not enough of that.
Yes. Yes.
Providing access to the beach, I looked at the map, we've got thirty-one access points already. I think that's your goal.
I guess that my question to that would be, is our, you know, what's saying master planning priorities, are we, are we looking at tourists more or the residents more? Because the residents who live here will have a much better idea. I know when I first moved here, I knew about one access point, I just grew up in that whole time. And as I kept living here, I was like, oh man, there's a great one over here, and I think when tourists come in, they know about a couple of the, you know, and you see it, you see, you know, Deep River, you get tons of cars there, and then up in Roseanne, you get tons of cars there, and then sometimes, so some of these other more hidden spots that have like nobody. And so I think the access idea would be maybe depending on our priorities, figuring out how to help people disperse better so we're not all at Deep River, you know, the Deep River spot. I mean, all the tourists at Deep River, I mean, I'm not, I'm quiet, trying to...
Maybe we should look at what we want to win next time?
No, no, just I think we need to eliminate from our master planning priorities. It doesn't seem like a priority to me, we've got three of them already.
I see. I think the main problem there is just parking, you know, canyon, they're parking up the street, I'm gonna have to put up snowparking signs, they're actually blocking, they're two for one.
So maybe rather than providing access to the beach, we should say, improve in access?
I don't think so, maybe improve in signage, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I hear.
I think that, we're mentioning way of finding signage a lot in this document, is the talk of conversation every time we get together, then the issue of transportation are, they're all shot through this thing because we all know the difficulties that are there. So I agree with Justin, I strike that off as part of priorities, we've got plenty, let's just make sure we use them well, keep them up, and be able to find where they are. And that's in the document.
What's interesting about this is, we know that all of those, what every community has ever been working on, and we know, and every one of those goals is common, carrying into the community, which costs is fair order, except providing access to the beach. And so, you know, so where this exercise needs to go, is recognize, these are not prioritized in any order, that's gonna make it special, is helping you prioritize, you know, part of things that are missing, or creative ways to look at, at combining these things. That's where Lincoln City Park and Corporation Master Plan, because you can have creative and something exciting, and something that you can support. But right now, I'm telling you, this is a great list, like every community wants to maintain, strengthen partnerships, and every community wants to provide their opportunities to achieve, I mean, these are very common goals of our communities across the state board, and, nah, providing access to beach, that's special. So when you look at this list, and you look at the exercises that Robin's gonna leave us in a minute, think about, these are all great goals, we're gonna wanna put the emphasis for the next ten years in this city. How are we like the nineties, how can we be creative about this, and are we missing something? And while these are coming along, goals, are there smarter ways to look at each of these goals and try and understand where we're just, we're trying to fit there, and kind of create the values, have a, make that go reality? And so that's where we want the discussion to go, not only this, of now, for this happening, but future happening, these are open houses, it's engaging with folks, you know, coming up with something that really means something to you, just...
I think, I would want to, would it be better to, since they're providing access to beach, improving beach accesses?
I agree. But maybe something that just says, you know, emphasizing the beach, I'm saying, you know.
Because I understand what you guys have been saying, this is not what's going in the doc, what's going in the document is what is refined by us and sort of processes like, right?
Yes.
So, so if we go through, we, I'm just, you know, it really isn't part of providing access to beach, if we got thirty-one of them, we like them, and the match can be stripped from the final document, right?
Yes, this, this...
Or maybe it's can be even refined further to get more specific.
Yes, we are weighing graphics, this is all for discussion and molding in a way. This is the bucket list, this is what holds the top in the bucket list for all the ways we're trying to get feedback, and so this is what came forward, and this is what we're running, we need to use something, because the foundation we're moving toward in the recommendations, so we're, yes, we're happy to work through and change and develop the latest advice.
And since you mentioned that, I'll throw out that we're about a couple, I heard that, so we really gotta hang out, push through here.
Yes, so what do you have next?
I think I'll make a point, I, I was just looking at the graph vision, it just occurred to me that one thing that I haven't seen, and I just haven't noticed, is the, the value of the economic engine that the parks system provides to the community, and that's to the tourists, that's to the real estate community, it's to, it's to all aspects of our community. So I think we should put that in our vision, that we're creating a parks system that creates economic vitality as well, because one argument that I've heard before, and it's valuable that I have a counter argument, is that, you know, we're subsidizing, so many people are subsidizing our purchases, because they're paying, and that's just that, well, if we don't appreciate the economic vitality of that, those, you know, tangible dollars come in as a result of being, having a house closer to open space or having, having open space, then I think we devalue or we look at the cost of maintaining things as a burden, and really it's not our duty.
And it does say, a lot of here is... So there's a whole long list, and I'm not gonna read all these. We have a very, I just, I'll let you browse over them. We have a fantastic group of stakeholder interviews, this is where we, human suggestions that stakeholders made, many of them people close to the central heart, community center, Hanson Garden, Miss Dog Association, young adults, young adults, people working, certainly about this and that, you, thus the cultures, yes, friendships in the school district, there was a lot of different people, we have all our names listed in the document, there's a lot of great suggestions for improvement and partnering.
No, I had finished enough, I don't know what we have.
Just there are a lot of great suggestions for improvement and partnering, and how we can make the system better.
A suggestion like for me is really to avoid, I'll start, the, 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 the jargon, for example, you use the word sustainable, I don't think we really know what that means. And I think that if I ask everybody, you know, we all have different dreams, what sustainable means, so, I would, I would just suggest that we, you know, avoid those kind of, I call them consultant, buzzers.
You know, sustainability for the city.
Yeah, you said this. Okay, if you want to come up and speak on where you're at.
I just, I'm just kind of here, my, my, um, you'll turn into an article soon enough, but sustainability, I suppose, is, it's not a buzzword around here, it's kind of meat and tails, it's kind of what we do, and.
But if you're going to use it, you've got it fine.
Exactly.
Because it'll be, every one of us will have a different understanding.
Right, but, um, why do you not use it, the, the?
Why? We're kind of all square.
Sorry, my name is, I'm just.
Yes, our planning committee. So again, we are in the draft stage, and we're welcome, and we want to reference the feedbacks of this type of dialogue, and figure out the wording, it's important, so, thank you.
Next.
Next. So, is there anything missing? Did we miss anything? We first found it, yes, you're missing some things, and Joe's actually mentioned some other things that we're missing, and so we need to acknowledge those things and include those in the next draft. So again, this is draft version, we update it constantly. We need to include the statewide angle, we need, we need to give more information to the tourists, which that was something that you mentioned, we need to be anonymous issues, anonymous traffic issues, and impact on center population circulation services. We need to identify the public, and by the public, so, not the public, not the public. There's a desire for quantifiable data, so we have to be more specific, and what we prefer so far, give the numbers exactly, and not generalize, so, more, a lot. So, we're, we're going to do that. So, and we've gotten some great comments so far tonight, additional things are missing. Comments are due to Deborah on June twenty-first, so if you have any long lists of things. It's been basically a week, and I think after that, we've, we're about to, so, if you're interested, we'll probably move on.
You could get a copy of the latest, you know, some of the files, yeah.
Okay, and also, this will be available on our SIS website under videos.
Yes, of course.
This whole thing is being taken.
Yeah, I want to call it.
Yes, I understand, okay. And who's next?
Robin, I would plead that we make it as succinct as possible. I mean, a hundred points of pages is, is daunting. And I think when these sorts of things come out, the public doesn't even, even care, rather than specifically how I'm going to read this. I agree, it would be nice to, I don't know if that's possible.
I would suggest maybe some of the background, all the responses I can, I think it'd be kind of appendix, so we still have the director, but we, we did, when we finished with the plan, the second, we really want to know about this, right?
If we could end up, if we said we did some of it, just about three pages, to show the vision and the priorities, and the action plan, but if we fit in three pages, that would make a functional plan.
I mean, I think your, your, your system is like, is incredible, you have a new base in that system, you have nineteen restaurants, I don't know the number sitting on the coast, but that makes restaurants for each access point. You have over four hundred acres of open space, you have, it's just incredible what has, what you've accomplished and what you have in your inventory, and so when you go in and you show each one what it is, yeah, they want, they have the just inventory of the pieces, and so that's a needed step, we have to inventory, but at the same time, I understand, so I'm really grateful that you have to do that, that's a great suggestion. So that's, I'm going to go through these really quickly, because I want to get to the good part, and, I don't even want to talk about this, because they're all identified in the document, and mostly because it's reactive to the idea of identifying things that are not necessarily that we've done, as if you are. The yellow priority lines are a line that represents as the first wave of priorities from walking and, to walk to the New York Idol, there was walking and biking with the district circulation plan, these are immediate goals, and orange are the longer goals, so we don't need, and the system plan don't have to come up with a whole, you know, circulation system and system plan, we already done, we're just showing that to you. Right, providing, why don't you come over here and show that with the bike, sure, I'm sure. The Knoll, of course, and the villages here on the north, this is an incredible opportunity, we know that's going to happen, someday, it's going to happen, it's an incredible place, and people are in need of it. We have identified in these purple lines, I'm going to have an incredible amount of each access points, so here we have, not only do we have, we have three different types of each access, we have beach view, we have beach access, and then we have beach access with restaurants and parks, you, you dial it in, there's a lot of public access to the beach. Then we noticed in the item that started our run there on the legend, we also had the ADA transition plan, which prioritizes four different parks for ADA improvements and four different, each access, of course, for the, so, this is basically an inventory also of opportunities, now, because it's showing where these places are, it's talking about creating these dimensions back for two little parts, and one to the other, and the next, so we have that for the northern, we also have for the southern, that park, and, well, a lot of women's names are coming in, so there's a page here, those two parks are in the hot for ADA improvement, so, there's a, of course, a lot of connections that have been already noted, but I didn't, you know, those are, those are diagrams, those are not real, and not suggesting that we're going to create any of the public. Feltated biking path, bridge across, so it may, it connects across, it's just figurative diagrams, and we're looking at that, that's the, one idea that's saying, figuratively, we want to create a connection, the real connection is the, and approved by the council all over the park, and. Did, did anybody else say anything that just got dropped off?
It was a discussion, last year, after the field, of connecting the new side creek trail out to.
Up to the, the lake, south.
And that didn't show up here, it shows a connection between these cells, the park and the side creek.
Also, I could show the, the.
It, it does not have the proposed NSCOT, the individual community plans, like the NSCOT camp, performance plan, I do not include those suggestions in the map, because they haven't been approved from the council, but they are identified in the text, in the text part associated document, and so there's parks, trails, open spaces, categories that they identify, or the economy plan are identified in the overall. So, systems and, uh, system opportunities and strengths, what's missing, we've heard these comments so far, members of the group, desire for a reading, develop a multi-weather recreation website, concerned about, we've got a park, and creating graphic issues and graphic impacts, so those are just, just to give you sort of a pulse on the feedback in person, or given in the document, these are some things that people consider possible to be challenges that they see coming up, so, do you have any additional ones? Again, please, please let us know. Okay, now we get to the comments. So, just talk, talk, we talked too much, it's time for you guys to talk, and part of it is understanding what's the big idea. So, we have a digital statement, as you were calling very beginning, we want to be ambitious, ambitious, but we want to be realistic. A lot of the comments, all the comments that I've heard from the document, is, oh, this is all just a bolt, this is very utilitarian, this is very, you know, fix that window and you're just, it doesn't seem like a vision. Now, this guy, he was here, he was a partner, just, he was here. You think about what the open space farm, acquisition farm did for the city, it changed its landscape, it was visionary at the time, it's still visionary. We have a chance here, or you have a chance, it's your city, it's your cleaning, it's your landscape, to think about what you want it to be for the next twenty years, and so while this is very much an inventory, we have this as a, as a, what's the big idea? And so when we move this next phase of the project, we're going to come up with recommendations. Now, that transect can go all the way from this end of the spectrum, we need another open space farm, we need to keep going, we need to build another cleaning, um, town, it, we need to create the head to day trail that builds from Cascadehead all the way to the slabs. We, you know, it could be anything, because this is where that idea and that energy passion comes from. We need neighborhood parks, for every neighborhood, you know, playground, and for every community that's within a half mile walk. So that's where I'm looking and exploring, think of a permanent, the outside box, you know, you, you are carriers, carriers and women's core, you're carrying the, the knowledge and the energy, passion, and champions that push the open space farm forward and purpose all that open space. Do you say, you know, in the statement, and say, no, we're just, maybe we don't have the resources, the face of that, and get sure they're, keep the balance going, keep existing, try to, keep facing and maintain. And I'm not, I'm not advocating for either, and this is your city, it's your community, it's your backyard, I'm just wanting to sort of open the dialogue, or are you going to say, you know, we, we really need to be groundbreakers? We have an amazing community, we have eighty, eighty-four hundred people, we have thirty thousand in the summer, we have all the dust skate parks in the winter. Then we need program, we need activities, we need to create a BMS by the park, we need to have a scooter park, we need to have splash pads, we need to think, sort of bigger outside box, so, if any of this is resonating to you, please, please come up.
Stop talking, I might break it. I was thinking of a youth center building, and then lay a biking slash running trail all along these double take roads, with state, you know, for this, the corners would get cut pretty tight, but we need it every time, state, these those like, yeah, these are like road, running and biking along the road, state.
It is, no?
Pretty simple.
It takes outside the city, but inside huge U V, which is really important, I think, to consider when you think about planning your twenty, thirty, forty year plan, so, I deserve to support.
No, all you. So, hey, further, I'm going to challenge you to, and the rest of you, to make this even a bigger idea, by.
Like east and west, wrap the way.
Well, why?
All the way around.
You're trying.
You know, west, east, double take roads, you know, and you could even, eventually in the future, have like, events, you know, where you do, start around the lake, and we could have, you know, pull the, the race or something like that. Like originally, from one of those trail, uh, reasons that I did, uh, earlier, those really bases, one of my ideas was to start at, um, like Three Rock Road, or actually the top of Cascadehead, and then go on these double take roads, and then come out at the outlet hall, hit the beach, and, and at Roseanne.
Now we're getting to a big idea, a very, big idea, so, okay, so, Robin, you had said before something about a citywide connected trail system, interconnected loop system, does that sound like multi-mode, like, multi-mode interconnected system?
Yeah.
trails, 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 would you do tracks?
We should be able to get in every rural corner of town without having to be on highway one of the lines.
With a stroller?
Yeah.
You think a stroller, yeah.
Four blades.
That's a stroller. I'm doing, uh, process when I have a bigger idea, okay?
You're going to do a, yeah, I hope, uh, be known, we'll get somehow from the Knoll to Cascadehead.
Or.
I don't think, oh, you have to get across, you're.
Make a trail. Yeah, simple, okay. From Cascadehead, okay, Cascadehead, and you want to stop at the Knoll, or do you want to go to the sledski?
I'm going the other way, because I have a big trail.
Mm-hmm.
At this point, it doesn't seem like that people use the Knoll, I mean, I know there are, there's a few people doing it, but it's, I would say most of the time, it's a Knoll.
I think, yeah, I think. Okay.
My, my biggest priority is full-time sports recreation, is.
Okay.
Would that, would that make.
Some of the levers with executives.
I have a vital leadership and manage acquisitions, and one of the biggest things that came around all of the meetings that we had, is our, excuse me, collective ignorance about issues associated with recreation, and these guys now are having their places immediately in what they work. I've also sort of, we're, 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 we have a lot of misinformation come through in comments, and I'd say just that, well, you need somebody who knows this field to be leading the system.
And it's a big system. And the crews who take care of the system are really strict, so, part of why increasing the size of the system, we've got to talk about increasing the, the ways as well.
So expand this to a bigger idea, would you say, to be, to be fully staffed, or appropriately staffed?
True.
You know, what I have as a physician, and have a lot of interesting problems, is, is to specifically detail out what are the health impacts on the community of these kinds of ideas. Having easier access to school, trails, through sidewalks, can dramatically increase the, or I said, increase the blocking of the student, will increase, improve their comp, seniors are, there are a few of them walk, ever, and so it's, it's doing more to help support those ideas to them.
So that is connected to this, but is it more transportation that you're thinking of, or recreation, is that, is that a state thing, discussion?
Yeah, recreational.
Would, would this address that?
And you know, a lot, yeah, for sure.
But being that brings nine months out of the year, I love the Cascadehead trail idea, but I think we need something that's covered and accessible for nine months of the year for the young and the elderly, the park or youth center.
So, okay, so if we have youth center, and we want to expand that to be a bigger idea, how do we, how do we say, I have more indoor facilities? Yeah, you, you, it's not, it's, 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 it's
Just an idea, there's, this past year, in two thousand and fifteen, a deal for the summer there, there were, uh, almost eighty-nine thousand member visits and point of sale in the store, you know, single drop, eighty-nine thousand uses, like, member uses and visitor uses of that facility in a year. Eighty-nine thousand, that's impressive, for a community of eight. Uh, point of sales are probably below twenty thousand, so a lot of those are residents, members. About sixty-seven thousand, member residents in that community. So obviously, there's a need and a desire to do this.
Mike, tell us the big ideas from there, for example. Please.
If I come back, I like to have the only one, I got one more, but I don't want to get, um, I'm not an expert in this, so do not forget the social media and the whole place, um, recreation tourism. While I, I drove down to San Francisco over, last year, built a system plan for the city of Portland, the entire federal region, the park system. So I went down to East Bay and hiked up the mountain, you know, the park range, there's a magnitude of visitation from the last ten years, it grew tenfold. It was, I mean, I asked them, why have that, I mean, without advertising, without insurance? It's what it was, it was Instagram.
It was Instagram, it was about a hole from the top of this trail, like, the vantage point to take that some of this mountain. And I think it was, I mean, they were having, like, they had twenty-five hundred additional visitors at that point in the year.
Or, it was stuff like, I'm sorry, one or two, yeah, three, ten years. And I'm not saying create a place like that here, but, uh, don't forget the technology and our youth are changing the way we understand and visit places. You know, embracing that has an economic impact, it has a impact to how you think about your park system, you want advertised components of it, you want to create a place that you can't beat the Instagram, and people can want to get their picture taken there. But we've seen it demonstrated quite hard, because, you know, I think, you know, for the plan for the future, we have to think about kids, social media.
So is this a big idea, or is this a?
It may not be a big idea, it may be, but it's.
It's a definite cycle.
A definite cycle, you don't want to leave it out.
And a strat.
So then, um, they have a park system, district master plan, that we're doing on there, and that city's really embraced outdoor activities, that's where, you know, people move there, they go skiing, fish, hike, like, water dogs. And they created, with their own measure, there's a couple new facilities, um, that are kind of flagship facilities, right? They're, they're like creating identity. And, uh, so they created a whitewater park, um, she's, uh, down, down, and they're building on this. And they said they were building it for neighborhoods and community then. And the park director told me that, you know, after, he said, you're crazy. This is going to draw people from the city northwest. And it is, it's drawn people from all over, they're all going there to do kayaking, and energy being, um, surfing, and, uh, so they picked a natural resource asset of their community and really created another recreational asset on that, you know, this, you know, become huge. And it's part of the park system. The other one, the citizenhood, which is a nice, um, that they built to promote hockey and winter time activities in their community. And so, uh, they opened it last year, it's used for youth hockey and ice team in the winter. It's open air play, it's not completely closed, and the summer, super basketball and football. And so, those were going beyond neighborhood amenities, you know, creating a neighborhood park, a playground, and a playground, and creating recreational assets that help draw and, uh, create, you know, in his case, create, uh, a place that, that overall needs the community. And the whitewater park, the urban tourist attraction is going to draw hundreds of people. Those are great ideas. And every community, I remember the independence, they built the Santa theater, four thousand people to celebrate, it built for July. That was their investment in their community, they, that's their identity, and so they created this asset there along the road, you know, uh, you know, they get forty-five thousand, you know, they're not sort of, quarter, just a neighborhood sort of, yeah. On the town of eight thousand people.
Okay, back to the city. Just something stimulating.
Having, you know, surfing is pretty popular here, it seems like, you know, certainly come up with some big ideas to support the surfers and to, uh, this town.
Yeah, the big waves, the big waves surf competitions that we have here are almost unknown by people, like, surf community. And there are, like, there are world famous surfers that come a couple hundred years ago.
And this is one of the few places to reconnect, it's two miles, and they're not two miles offshore. You can see them on the beach, you can see them, like, in certain places you can walk.
Sort of like a scanning wave, like a surf wave, and it's united, the quarter around the community, relax.
So water sports generally, like.
Well, it's just, I feel like, which is where you drive.
Yeah, I know, I mean, listen, I'm wondering how to make, make it brutal, you know, so it's a big idea.
A water park.
You mean like a water park, you could relate the river to, and tie it in. I mean, I know that's already kind of something that's on her mind.
So I expand the community center and maybe make a senior center and separate it from? Yeah, have this water area and then the, the area that we have.
Can we think stuff into them?
Yeah.
There were some big ideas because.
Sorry.
Yeah.
You have a new center, you would need, um.
Yeah, but you're talking about.
Yeah.
You're going to have to talk about.
Because I was reading, I read the plan, and I was reading, I think it was, correct me if I'm wrong, actually, that the courts were being less used, whereas, um, more individuals, so I had to check with activities, we're getting more use. And so, in that frame of thought, it would kind of be like, well, why are we making something that might not be as used as an indoor facility?
Regardless of the.
Yeah, rather than, something, we could be something with walls, because it does rain nine months out of the year, rather than the courts, if we've got those, and, you know, I mean, probably across the time, I mean, just have without reports, and if I'm not going to be sure around them, might be not a good idea.
That's, uh, that's a thing to talk about, I think, when we prioritize, certainly, yeah, it's.
A water park with that, that, uh, you have something at the top where you can see the surfers up there. There's a little lookout.
So I'd like to see, um, like, the, the, the image would be like a kayak shack at, you know, Hostel Park, which would turn into a, a science-based research site there, so that people would be coming to the area, learning about the natural environment, which were crazy, and having all these parks to celebrate, and then also giving them the tools to research that and what about it.
An introvert's center.
Like an introvert's center, yeah.
With interactive media.
Yeah.
Can I remove all these things as, uh, as water, a focus on water, recreation?
I, I'd like to, like, capture the other side of it.
Yeah.
And scientific.
Okay, so that should be a separate idea, a separate idea?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, water park and.
I mean, it's about that field.
I was just going to say, we're right next door to Newport, we're not flagging that.
Do the freshwater side. You know, there isn't a freshwater, uh, science center that, that is a state, you know, focusing on freshwater, business, I feel about this all, I don't understand.
At one time, we're looking at that weather center in South Lake, which, you know, you are sitting in this private property.
That sounds like what everybody's talking about, how to do this. Using all of the recreational amenities, whether we have them now or whatever we're going in the future, to bring your tourist attractions.
Absolutely, I think it's a, like, a thing that I was trying to mention before, this is money to be made, and just sustain, you know, the community towards our value. You know, the open space money was incredible, about it, to the city, and we are going to bank that for decades.
I don't think it's a same here.
It's unbelievable, but it's, it's true.
Well, I have big ideas anymore, it's seven o'clock, so we should try to wrap this up.
And also, the, the story on, on the water, I think, I don't know, it was too big, and Washington State, there's a lot of tubers, there are kind of twenty-something, and the first thing you want to do in first hour here is to Dee River.
That's a good idea.
But, Mike, it's just funny that, that, I mean, it seems like we could do more with Dee River, you know, and, and create that, you know, this is the shortest river and, you know, create something that, that is a tourist attraction.
Great point. And a tide.
I'll, um, so, maybe one more to add, a big idea would be, we've already got a world famous skate park, which we now are world famous in the surfing community. One other sport that is exploding right now is mountain biking. And if we built a trail system for mountain bikes with a chairlift, that would be the.
Cause we go up there, I'd say, yeah, that's what I'd say.
There's slides, there's huge slides, there's one that just runs down a whole mountainside, and they're incredible, we could do that off, I think.
Okay, um, slides, can I put that with the, is this, I'm saying.
Yeah, you can add that.
You say two.
It's like to that seagull, think about going to seagull and all the stuff that.
Slides. How about ropes? Anybody know about rope courses or something like that? That sounds to me like a neat thing that I haven't heard of.
Yeah.
Anything else along those lines?
Zip line.
Zip line, kind of that extreme sport.
Uh-huh. Yeah, that was on one of the, that was crazy. I haven't seen, I haven't, I haven't.
We can do skytrams.
I don't even know what I'm writing, but yeah. Yeah.
It's like four of them are very.
Okay, should we go to the second page?
I just wanted to make sure that interconnected trail system, too, doesn't lose a little weight, because this has got the head, so.
Oh, from.
You literally started.
From Cascadehead South, all of that. I was going to.
And around the loop.
A loop.
Cause the east side is kind of, that's why mine was a crazy.
I would have had to number two as well on the highway by Dee River, having a, um, a ridge, both the path, ridge, so you're not having pedestrians on the ridge. And, and that's good for free also. You really can't walk across, it's going to be safely, or for bikes. It's really scary out there.
World class boardwalk. I, I'm not saying that's, um, something that other communities have mentioned, but not so, so.
A different type of beach access.
Yeah, I mean, world class, you know, like, when I said world class, make that a draw. I've got to go see before.
No. Is it more of something to walk on in your indoor big idea? Or is it, I mean, it's just, it's basically a recreational trail along the beach, or is it?
It could be.
Lots of other things.
It's a tourist attraction.
Like, kind of like something besides the beach or the intensive beach. And, you know, the environment's, that really brings people down their commitment to nature and, uh, some recreational activity.
We'll look at the turnaround seaside. If you've ever been to seaside, I have a place, just a turnaround at the end of Broadway, right? I mean, there's nothing there except a fantastic view, and you can see it from the bar, you're not even stopping, it's a circle, turnaround, and from there to prom, go south, and more, it's a launch pad, but it's almost like, you know, the Venice seaside, you have to drive down Broadway to turnaround. And nearby, it's got a bunch of other track, parkage, you can play video games, it's got the shopping, all stuff, and I realize that we have what we have, and there may be an opportunity to, with a certain amount of investment that's not enormous, with a budget, you might be able to direct people to that, and you can enjoy, you know, types of weather from, you know, I mean.
They have huge soccer fields.
Involve all the, the swing to the beach. One, one other thing that might, and is the state park, I think, that, uh, I think that this guy is getting revitalizing that park with, you know, the city's investments or whatever, managing the state, and the needs that come in the state or city ownerships are going to be more vital. I really believe more that, not that I think the state's, you know, abandoned or doing anything else for them, but I think that the opportunity, if the city owns it, then you can do more with, because it's just the, the framework that you say parks have. And, and do you ever find a very type of location that would be appropriate for the suggestion that I was making? Because.
They're always, they're ready for the, they're ready. Playing off that, if, if we could, back and sort that into the city and make it a, a grass park instead of a parking lot, and then build a parking structure on the other side of the highway, and maybe under, old pass or underpass from pedestrians, that's a big idea, that would be amazing. Because then, when people are driving through the middle of town, they don't see a parking lot and a beach, they see a city park with whatever facilities we put there.
You have a science center on the park, in the park entity, and the whole thing goes away.
It's an iconic location.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe Dee River, you, I've got a video of someone to, uh, Randy Bell.
Okay, but here's a, a picture of a trip.
Yeah, yeah, it's a document.
But it is, is a, is a, something that's pretty iconic, you know, if you were to.
You can turn you to the whole river, you know.
Shorter river.
Anything else? Okay, then. Youth center, and, and maybe I should say, and other indoor facilities, is that? And, and other. Multimodal, connected trail from Cascadehead South, looping, um, Dee River, the swimmer bridges, full-time park and rent director and corporate staffing, water park and water sports.
I would put surf in that, just to figure out where it's.
Surfing, okay.
We ought to combine one and four together, uh, at the end. You could have, it would set up a water park, surfing, stuff, and five, then, that'd be a pretty big idea.
Two, okay, two, yeah, okay, and combination would stay for now. Okay, um, now, so this was really cool stuff, indoor water sports, or are we talking also including surfing in the ocean and other ocean, like, stuff, is that a separate thing? Or is that something?
We just want to be, we want to have more publicity for with our activity.
Well, it would be, it would be, like, I envision outdoor, large water park, they have in Washington, it's not like we're going to have one out here.
Okay, so I don't say indoor/outdoor, I'll just.
It would be indoor/outdoor, but like the surfing wave specifically, it would be a facility, you know, it could be indoor or outdoor, but it has nothing to do with the ocean.
Right, okay.
It's a scanning wave, you know, we see, yes, it's.
Whole lot.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, okay, science center, um, and then six, mountain biking with chairlift, um, slides, rope course, zip line, extreme sport, sky tram. Seven, boardwalk. And I have quite, did I, do I need to put something more to reflect your idea?
So we'll stay on, uh, sort of, um, redeveloping, I think we're talking about, I think we're talking about, I think, the river.
My last question.
Redeveloping there from, I mean, how did you go like this weekend? I've got quite a bit more on the timeline, but there's not, I guess, recognizing potential for, something to do with that there, yeah.
Okay, so revitalizing state parks, move parking elsewhere. The big.
I would be specific to the river.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And, you know, what, it's not just, it's just.
Just the river. Just theater, theater, theater.
And the state park.
So we have eight big ideas, uh, I feel really good about it, does everyone feel pretty excited about these big ideas? They're pretty big, um, there's eight of them, I don't know if all eight would be moving forward as a plan right now, I don't think, I don't know, that it's going, but, I don't know, it's going to happen, do you feel that now would be a good time to think about, I don't know, we, is there more consensus or desire about any of those ideas, do you think, would you suggest us move forward with those big ideas and see how it play out, or, sort of, you know, does anybody notice we open us, or do you feel like we should cinch down a little bit and, and come through, maybe, here, for?
Well, I like, great, I mean, collapsing through those, like, their deep center, you know, it's like, becomes, for Jason, it becomes a lot, but, you know, the, you know, and the same thing with the crime center, it becomes like a focus on, built slay, and freshwater, and kayaking, and it's about the recreational, it's not just about, like, learning water quality, it's about getting access to the nature, it's more like a nature science center, resource center for, just like, freshwater ecosystem, that reaches to, out of the earth, to the water, to, to, and you could collapse a lot of those ideas into one area, maybe at Dee River, and, come up with...
This is focused on Dee River specifically.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think that, that's, if you're going to do something like that.
It's an opportunity for boardwalk, and select pay as well.
You're lost.
Just a boardwalk, right, and off the theater, um, yeah, definitely, I don't know.
Uh, the boardwalk, just in the state park, in the...
I know Dee River, yeah. To your question, I'll say that I like them all, I don't want them to take it.
Well, here's a question I have, is, do you really want to take all these ideas, show up at the Golden House, knowing, um, I think people's hopes up on sometimes you may or you're not really paying back, and, where does that, how does that fit into the process? What can we, we take all this up in this hour, if you don't want out there anything, but, I'm just having anything on, feed that back to the community, or we want, you know, because this is going to, this will be reflected, and, you've got all these ideas out there, big ideas, um, and, really, to feed back, and, uh, we want to represent the community, and we want to hear some good ideas out there, at the same time, we don't want, we want to pass this on to us, you know, we don't want anything out there, and then people just go, you know, I would say, we, 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 so, if I just ask that question, because for you, the Golden House, any more eventing of these ideas, either internally...
Okay, what is the Golden House, that's not so obvious.
Obviously.
Okay, so we've got months here, we've got a month before I have to... Okay.
Can I ask for a big idea, dude, it looks like you're going to do this, but I do like the question.
Yeah.
You're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, is the system of the vision, state, I mean, is it achievable?
Well, we, we've already mentioned, of course, for this, if it wants to keep people before us, to us turn to resources, but, if we don't get people excited, they're not going to count the similar effort for a park's rapid life, so, I, I think we've got to go through and verify, and, um, I think we should polish this up and maybe shine it again, just, in the present images, photographs, and other facilities or something, uh, yeah.
I think this list, it, I wonder how this list is to be called, um, I think the list is, it's being broadcast right now, so, exactly, I think this list would get people excited, I mean, this is an exciting list of things that, uh, you know, if you want, as, a resident of the city, and their family want to visit, you would want to take them there, you want to go there weekly, go there every day, or every other weekend, or whenever, but, if you have family, or, you're taking them there, you're taking them to the new sign, waiting to chill, on Dee River, and, this is exciting, I'm, I'm, I'm thrilled, I think this is a great, uh, start for next part of the project, I think we have one to tell them, from, from the team, so, would you step up here so we can hear you?
I have a friend, Rob, I just wanted to say, you know, we, um, I was waiting to hear this brought up on its own, but, um, I can't wait anymore, but, the other thing that we have, besides the gorgeous, um, landscape, and the ocean, and all of this, we can do on that, we have another really great thing here, I think we could use somehow, and that would be, we have wind, we have a considerable amount of wind, we almost can, at least through the summer, and, we could have outstanding, very creative, big idea, wind park, maybe associated with some of those other ones, and, you know, if you want to try out, um, camp flying or something in a safe environment, maybe there's a way to do that, and we could have, my favorite, uh, windmill, art project that explains how it works, naturally generating the electricity, and also how the education comments, so kids can learn, have kids, like, big people, too, can learn how that whole process works, and, it'd be very cool, you know, I'll call it.
So, do you want to try and combine them with one of our eight, or do you want to add number nine, or, or do you want to handle that?
Just to get you go tied really nicely to the science center, I mean, it's, wind water, sun, all sorts of sun, and, yeah, and whales.
And rain.
And rain, yeah, of course.
Where the... Celebrate the rain.
Yeah.
And how do you go?
Salmon.
Has to, and it has to come over, the science.
Okay, are we done?
I think we're in really good shape, so, uh, next, uh, you can leave your comments to Deborah by Jeanne Helpert, uh, we're going to send out a little advice for our next open house, and I'll have you, so, write your calendar, probably, and that'll be, it's going to be the nineteenth.
Wait, by the way, when you get a meeting listener to request, a lot of people are really good at this, and some people, you know, I think, I, I kind of like his tone here, so, please try to respond quickly, and if you don't understand, you can give us a call, uh, but it is a real thing, it's not just, I go, I go with this, so, please do respond, and let us know what's for you.
I don't, how would we care?
Um, I have a right here, so, probably say, uh, it's, we, 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 we will send out some...
Also.
Thank you very much, it's been a great, thank you, I want to, so, please.
Thank you, Greg. And anything I can, I can do.
Okay.